Call this regular school board meeting to order roll call.
Mr. Ballard, Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance. First hearing of the public. First hearing of the public. Anybody?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I know you guys missed me because I missed you guys. I took a little leave and I enjoyed myself seeing my golden pretty color and all that stuff. But anyhow, my name is E.G. Rice and I'm in the 1034 MLK Boulevard, 21st Street. Uh, it's time for my banquet coming up and I presented the information to Ms. Johnson here. So I hope you be supportive and especially, uh, are you running for position?
I am.
Well, you can take an ad from me, you know.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let me know.
Give me the information.
Information. And I will thank you very much for that. Are you guys in good behaviors since I've been gone or you think you need to tell me? No? Okay, peace and love, alright?
Okay, need a motion to approve or amend and sign the minutes for our regular meeting held August 6th?
Motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on August 6th.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes. I'm getting pregnant.
One of them. I took it as a yes.
One of them.
Mr. Damacchia.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Any old business? Important recommendations of the treasurer.
Uh, the one thing I did want to bring up, I know it was a discussion prior to the last meeting, but I just wanted to give the opportunity as to whether or not there was still some questions about the year-end cash balance now that it was formally approved. I know initially when I brought it up, they were still working the numbers out. It was like two meetings prior and I think we're talking about three meetings ago now. I was, I knew we were going to finish better than projected and I said around 16 million. We had started the year with a 16 million other cash balance. What, when, as we closed, it ended up being closer to almost 21 million. So we ended up having a better year than expected, than I projected.
You said when you started the year, you had what?
16 million.
Six million, right?
No, 16. The cash balance at the beginning of this year was 16 million. And then at the end of this, I'm talking about 17, 18.
Are you talking about June 30th when you do the wrap-up?
Yes, yes. So the carryover cash balance then, as of July 1st of 2017 was 16, 16,410,117 dollars to be exact. And then, so then I was projecting closer to, we'd finish the year at about 15,38173. We ended up finishing 20,907,334.
Okay, this is, this is money that's, that's not been encumbered for anything, right?
Correct. This is the, the true cash balance. So, um, so I knew there was some questions about it. I understood from the last meeting that I'm more than willing to either during the meeting or whatnot if somebody has questions, to answer those as well. And then.
21 million.
Almost 21 million, yes, 20,907.
We're talking about a surplus.
Well, it's the cash balance, the ending cash balance.
That's also what confused the conversation was.
Absolutely.
Surplus.
Yes, that's why I missed.
Two completely different things.
My no means a surplus. It's just means, so based on the cash balance we had last year, when I did my forecast, I projected based on expected or estimated revenues, estimated expenditures, that we would be closer to, would be slightly below 16 million, that we'd basically, we would exceed revenue with expenditures by, I think it was roughly one, about 1.1 million, actually about a million 30,000. We ended up being better than that. We, we did better than what I projected. Keeping in mind, the projections that are on here are the forecast and I assume kind of worst-case scenario when I forecast. You know, you're always trying to be physically responsible to manage and make sure you're not taking into account every possible kind of outcome, so.
This doesn't necessarily change your, our lens for the five-year forecast though?
It will, it will adjust it, yeah. Because what it ends up doing then is these numbers are actuals, so that will carry into the actuals when I do my October forecast. Those numbers will be out there then for the end of the year and then we'll also push everything forward by that differential, so. And it could change some of my, looking at it, it could change some of my kind of thoughts for those future estimates. Something's coming in significantly better and I see a trend over the last couple of years, I might want to start rolling that back. Whereas, you know, if I see one or two years of it trending a certain way, until I kind of hit that three-year mark, especially when we're looking at revenue, I won't make that adjustment based on that until I'm completely comfortable in seeing that it's really going that way and it's not just a blip.
Do we have any preliminary idea in terms of enrollment?
According to what.
Registration and everything, so.
Yeah, and obviously those numbers aren't even rolled up into the state yet, but according to what the state is expecting from expectation and other districts' open enrollment up to this point, it looks like it's pretty much stabilized. It's kind of, they, they kind of not flatlined revenue because we will have that, that increase due to the Miami budget.
But we're capped anyway, so.
Yeah, we're capped anyway, so it wouldn't change.
You know, I'm just looking at the, we're never going to get more. We can always potentially lose.
We could always lose more and we could have some come back, so we could, we could realize some of that coming back, being that we, about one-third of our students are either a charter or open enrolled. So we could always see some of that come back, but at this point, it's, we're not seeing the mass, the mass exodus compared in the past.
I guess it would be an administrative question. I'm more asking, what do our enrollment numbers, not the fiscal side yet.
Oh, yeah.
But what do our, you don't know what our enrollment numbers are.
Not that I've seen, no.
Because we just finished kindergarten registration and all that stuff, so it's always, it's kind of like that blip on our radar because that would directly.
Of course.
Turn into revenue. Usually not the best outcome, but you know, hopefully flatter than.
Do they still have ADM week?
Uh, no, it's a, it's an ongoing now to where with everything going technology-wise, they don't have the one-count week or the two-count week they went to where it was in October, I believe, in January, February timeframe. They don't do that necessarily anymore. It's more of an ongoing kind of rolling count.
So then how do we, um, that we also use that to kind of tell us as a barometer where we're at? So now how do we get reported?
You can get more current reports based on, it's almost like you get more real-time reports. You don't have to wait for certain times of the year to get, to get that kind of counts types of things. As the numbers are updated within EMIS, they trickle through and then you kind of see that, those updates. So really it's as, it could, the numbers can be as updated as fast as how long it takes the EMIS person to send them to the state and the state kind of.
So then what we should probably do, because we haven't had this scenario before, is maybe you can help us. We need to have some kind of a system where we get quarterly or somehow, I mean, because normally what we'd be doing is we'd just be kind of waiting until ADM week.
Yes.
Not knowing, everybody's speculating and we have a number of different numbers, but since that's no longer the case, we just need to know what is our system and at what date do we, you know, I mean, the state numbers kind of drove us in terms of what we were doing.
Yes.
So now that that's not a factor, um, I don't know what's, what the logic is, when would we want to be kind of?
You tell me, I mean, I can, I get them, I can get the numbers, I do it anyways when I do the, the foundation, the foundation breakdown.
When do they think that we stop adding kids and losing kids? Because the first few weeks, you don't know anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, the first day of school, last year we had like a bunch of bodies. And now with the, um, we don't know, I mean, so I don't know what, um, whether that's week three of school. At some stage, we should, we should have kind of ended the influx and the exit.
Would that be a bad idea for that September 17th board meeting, maybe have some numbers for us?
That shouldn't be a problem, huh?
Because that'll better inform us in terms of, of other revenue also.
True, very true.
And what is the projection, so when is our, our collection with the, um, in terms of taxes from the auditor? How does that?
Uh, we've already started getting advances for the second half of this year. And I believe, I think we usually get our, the settlement for our tax revenue usually by the end, either end of August, early September is usually when we get the true settlement, so.
So then we'll know our revenue soon.
For tax purposes, yes. And then I can also bring in the, uh, the foundation report. Typically, it should be good by the time we hit the September 17th meeting. I can bring in that foundation report and give you guys the detailed one. That'll show projected ADM, where they're seeing that at. You should see some sort of an adjustment at that point because usually that last foundation payment in September is what I used to kind of use to start doing the forecast for October. So that's, those are usually pretty stable numbers and you can have a pretty good idea. And that'll also show you exactly where kind of each one of the sections of the foundation payment are going to settle in at.
Yeah, one more question with the ADM piece. Since that's no longer how it was, is it possible for us now, because we would have kids who would be gone and then their money was gone and then they would show back up without their money? So does this mean now that their money comes back with them?
If they show back up, then yeah. And there's still a, I don't want to say as soon as the kid gets back, the money shows back up. There's always a, you know, usually a delay.
So how are we tracking that? I mean, are we, and are we aggressive in going after? Because that money would have gone to the community, whatever entity it was, correct?
Yes.
And then is it the state's responsibility to automatically return that revenue to us or do we have to actually?
It's, it's up to both of the schools to do the reporting piece and that reporting is what then dictates where the money goes.
You remember in the past, we had a problem with that and we found a million dollars that we were paying out to.
That we shouldn't have been paying out because they were still here.
Shouldn't have paid because they're still here. And the state said we weren't getting that money back.
Right.
So that, you know.
It's all, the, the, and this is one of the big emphasis's I've been bringing up in regards to making sure EMIS is getting the proper attention because I think that's almost like the forgotten piece of the puzzle is, I mean, report cards are only as good as the EMIS data and funding is only as good as the EMIS data. So if you don't have the proper information going to EMIS and there was that disconnect, and in the past there, there was a disconnect in regards to, between finance, HR, and EMIS. That's the way I kind of view it as the triangle. If you don't have all of those connected and somebody's not getting the appropriate information, that's when you start to see those kind of errors and the, the not catching up with the student data, also not catching up with staffing data.
You guys don't know what we're talking about.
Yeah, I do.
Some, everyone kind of, so what happens is we have students, we do a count of the number of students in the district. That determines the state foundation money that we get. And so we would have students who would be enrolled in a community school or charter school, enroll or something. And then, let's say in October, November, December, they return to the district. The money is already left to go to, that child was in and we were having difficulty when the student came back, bringing that money back to the district. So, um, I think at one time, was it a million dollars close to Tony? That had been paid out and of course, they make their report and it's automatically, money's gone. Well, then the students come back because it didn't work out or whatever and we were just basically short money. So we're educating the students without the resources and then the other district had taken those resources.
And depend, depending on who you're dealing with, other district-wise, the state, what the state will tell you is that you can invoice that other district and if they want to pay you back, they can, but in most cases, they never want to, obviously.
I can understand that.
Yeah.
When you spend the money.
They look at it as, oh, it's your mistake, we've already spent those monies, we're well in. And especially if it's a million dollars, we're probably talking, it wasn't something that happened over a two-week period. It was probably something that was ongoing, so.
You don't.
You don't.
They don't, they lost the money.
Yes.
You try.
That's why you make sure you're, you're doing, EMIS is.
Well, our, our belief would be that the state would play a role in that. Just like if, for example, if we overcharge the state on something like transportation, they get their money back. If they give us too much money, let's say they gave us money for students we didn't have, they're going to get their money back.
They just stock it right off the foundation.
They'll just take it, they'll take it off the top.
They don't even make your decision.
We'll debit your next year's, you know, money. But for us, we're chasing, and it's difficult for districts because a lot of districts don't have the personnel to do it. I mean, the manpower that it takes to chase down that money, to try and find the student, what district they're at and all that stuff. It's a lot of, there's a lot of.
Paperwork.
My wife does the registration, she's the person for Clearview. And it is crazy. I mean, you've got students that you're trying to identify by an address if they're really in your district. Then you've got students who come in and open enroll, students who leave. It's, it's, it is not easy. I can't, we can't blame them to some extent, but the other piece is once it's been identified, it's not like there's this legal authority that says you got to pay them back.
Is there a deadline you have to pay these charter schools?
It automatically comes out of your foundation. You, you get a foundation payment twice a month, it automatically is pulled out of that based on what the, the information that's reported through EMIS.
So they pull it out, but then we got to go chase it to get it back.
Yeah, we show it as a deduction line. There's a deduction line on there for community schools, deduction line for charters, you know, deduction line for open enrollment.
So they just automatically take it out of your, your account?
Yes.
Okay, you can't put a stop on it every time and can't block it?
You, what you can do is, if you're aware of it, you can report that that student is now enrolled back with you and then there will be, now you'll have two districts in saying, well, no, I have the student, I have the student. Then at that point, the state will investigate and see where they're at. And if you catch it soon enough, you know, before the foundation payment has started to process, then they can hold up, maybe hold that student out and that money will then get processed later. Because what they do is they take a, it's, they give a projection at the beginning of the year and it's always kind of a rolling amount. So as students come and go, that number will come, come up or come down or you'll see the deduction go up or come, come down. And so as that's adjusted, in most cases, if they, and the state will contact if they see, you know, one kid's enrolled at five districts, they're going to ask all five districts, what's the correct information and get to the bottom of it. And in most cases, they won't push that money through until they have the right information.
Okay, so when they come into school, you get a class list and then you check them in when they come in? And then you, after so long, you keep them on your list and after maybe say a week or two weeks, you drop them off your list? So when they, when they come into your classroom or your school building, whatever, do they keep, they have a list of kids that haven't, we call them no-shows. And they turn those in. Do they, you know, take them, send them downtown so you can, see if you can find these kids faster? Because I know you think you had X amount of kids in your classroom and you go in there and it's like five or six who's a no-show for a whole week. So you, you know, in the class, we were allowed to keep them on the roll for so long, after that, we have to drop them. So is there a time where they have to get that information from the classroom to the secretary to downtown? Is there a faster way they can do that if they don't show up?
I don't deal too much with it, but I can say that it's, that's probably where maybe some of the disconnect is, is how fast that information's being processed. But yeah, that, that's, you've got kind of the right idea. They take the enrollment, the enrollment then goes to probably the secretary. The secretary would then move it on to EMIS based on what EMIS is reporting then to the state is what dictates the funding piece.
Well, could you cut, instead of having it, I can't remember, it was like two or three weeks or so, we had to keep the kids on a class list just in case they do show up. Can you cut that, if you find out what that is, cut that down in half and that way maybe you get a jump on the kids not showing up?
It could. I mean, yeah, the more you can do on that end is, obviously it's a timing issue. The faster you can get the information in and everything, the faster you can find those types of errors.
Right.
Our challenge is more not the kids who don't show up, it's the kids who come back.
Yes.
So the no-shows, we aren't getting, they used to do a, a count on a certain day.
Yeah.
Okay, the no-shows, we're not losing money unnecessarily unless somebody else has claimed that student.
Yes.
We're talking about.
The kids are coming from the, the private schools.
Right, some of them will return, right. We're, we're more, my question was about, we have a lot of students who will be out of the district at the beginning of the year and they're in a charter school or some other place and for some reason, either it didn't work out like they thought it was going to work out, they end up coming back. We have a whole lot of kids who re-enroll back in the district, but their money's already gone to the district that they were temporarily in.
They can't come to you with a check?
So, and that's just.
I mean, if you leave there, they have to pay you to take them.
If it was only that easy.
So that's just a, it's a concern why, because you multiply that by that.
I understand what you're saying, because that's where the money, are you losing, how much are you, you're losing almost like a million dollars, you say, for these kids?
Well, it's per student, it's 6,200 per student, so, and that entire amount follows that student. So we might not receive the entire amount from, because the state does a calculation between what they project you'll get from local tax revenue and then there's the cap that factors in, so, you know, we might only get 4,800 for that student, but if they leave, we send the full 6,200.
So they get, when they get, when you're paying for these kids, do they just take like one lump sum and that's the whole thing? They don't take an importance of payments?
It ends up working out to a portion of a payment for us because what they do is take, there are 24 equal installments throughout a fiscal year for us. So say that the dollar amount's 50 million and a student leaves, so now it's going to drop down by that 6,200 and then they're spread paying the balance. So you see the, the kind of piece part.
Yeah.
Per pay and depending on timing, that total number, it'll adjust and, that's why I said, it's constantly, that number's constantly influx. Every time you get a new foundation payment, that number's slightly changed. It, it never maintains. That's why when we get these projections, I'll look at what the state's projecting, but then I'll also look at a trend before I forecast it because I'm going to say, okay, great, you're saying that it's stabilized, but we usually see an influx of students or we see a bunch of students leave in September or, you know, whatnot. So I try and gear it more towards what our history, our data says, not so much with the state, who is somebody that's not here and doesn't physically see kind of what we're trending.
So this has been a practice of yours since you've taken over the job. This is nothing new, right?
Uh, this is, this is standard practice for almost every treasurer.
Only thing that's different is there's no longer ADM week. In the past, there was a day.
I know what ADM, yeah, I understand, but the finances and all this stuff, it's all the, it's all like they're predicting and all, this is nothing.
Oh, yeah.
Just the ADM, okay, I got you.
And so for us, that was when we got our, we knew what our number was then. That's now erased, so we got to put something else in place.
Before, what you'd see is twice a year.
Right.
So it'd be 50 million up until you do your count week in October and then come December, you'd see a big spike or a big drop. And then they do another count week and then two months later, there's always that delay and that's what I'm saying. It's not that, that, you, you still see some of that delay, but the, the count is ongoing. So you see a delay, but you see movement all the time based on when it originally hit.
So I just, I thought Dolly's question was something new that I missed out.
I don't know. It's, it's a, it's kind of a new way of doing the same thing.
Yeah, oh, okay, I got you. Okay, I'm good.
Well, how do you keep track of students whose parents are not responsible for getting into schools or that they play hooky and they don't have a place for live? How do you keep track of those students?
You lose the money.
Well, not just that.
At the time, until they come back.
Very transient district. I think at one time, we had in one building, like a 50 to 60% change. In other words, 60% of the kids who were in the building at the beginning of the school year, were not in the same building at the end of the school year. Now, they might be in a different building, they may have moved across town. These are typical indicators where you have a lower home ownership, ownership, you get more transient students. The higher your poverty level of a district, they're more transient because they're not in these fixed living conditions. And so, be it because of unstable families and they're moving in with grandma, different pieces, but whatever the case, they move out of that local district where their school is around the corner, now their body's transferred. The big plus is the way they started identifying students a few years ago with a number. We can now track the number where before, you weren't even allowed to track the number. You couldn't identify kids like that. So you wouldn't, we wouldn't even know, it'd take us a while to figure out that Johnny has left, General Johnny Wilson is over at Longfellow. So that's just, it's very difficult and not to mention how it impacts learning. Because I've now been in three different school buildings in one year. I've had three different math teachers, three different math classes, so.
You were always, like, in the past, prior to kind of how things are now, you were always kind of at the whim of the other district hoping that they reported the student is now enrolled there, that would then trigger something on your end. Then we'd get notification, well, so-and-so is at this district now, well, we got to look at why this wasn't reported on our end. It's, now it makes it a little bit more easier to, to track, so.
Not to mention that it affect, that definitely affects our graduation rate.
Yes.
Because if a student leaves, if they're sophomore, junior, or freshman, and we can't figure out where they went, they moved to whatever state, then four years later, two years later, when they're supposed to graduate, they're counted as a dropout. Because you can't, yeah.
That's why I said, if you don't have a good EMIS system, it, it doesn't just affect the finances, it 100% affects the report card on some things too. So it's, it's a very, very, it's probably one of the more ignored section of schooling in regards to like funding and things like that. It's something that directly impacts on every level and really needs to, needs to be better, more attention paid to it.
Could I, I, I have a question. Is EMIS tied into House Bill 410? I mean, that, that started last year and I really don't know who to ask, but I just wonder how, how it went for us last year when, when they, they were supposed to, like if your child didn't come to school or had so many lates or, and it was done by hours instead of days now? That, that the school's district was supposed to bring you in and talk to you and set up some, find out what's going on and.
It should be directly correlated to it, I don't know that.
And, and, and I just want to, I just wonder if we did that, you know, I just, I just wondered if we were on top of it or.
Wasn't that supposed to disallow to, for a person to be suspended because of attendance? I think that's, that was, wasn't that part of the purpose?
That was the main goal, yeah.
Yeah, they were no longer going to allow students to be suspended based on.
Attendance.
Attendance. Because previous, before that, if you missed X number of days, it could result in an automatic suspension. And so, um, that was the only consequence and it wasn't necessarily effective because, you know, kid's not in school, it doesn't really help the learning piece. But at the same time, um, how do you discipline that? Who do you hold accountable for?
And all that data is directly reported through EMIS, so yeah, I mean, to answer your question, it should be, do enough people, did enough people transition away from the change and did the dots get connected? That's a whole other question, I think.
There's something inherently wrong that if a person isn't coming to school, that you give them more time off?
Yes.
You know, I mean, it's just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't seem right.
What year did we lose the million dollars?
I don't even know, that's, it hasn't, years, years back, right?
Ten years ago.
It was when they first started.
Charter schools was really starting to be built on every corner and we started, we actually had to pay a consulting firm to go in and audit the charter schools, private schools, as well as us to find those kids and, you know, find out how much money we were losing that would, should be in this district. So, you know, because school districts don't have the manpower, I think Mr. Williams alluded to it earlier, to control things like this. So we had to use an outside consulting firm, I believe their name was K-12 Consultants, that came in and audited the district and found those kids and found the money. And then we, of course, had our attorneys contact the Ohio Department of Education, say, listen, you know, we can prove that these kids are in our district and this money belongs to this school district, but, you know, it, they didn't care, didn't matter.
All they'll do is fix it going forward, they won't go back and get you the money back that was due.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the other piece is, this was kind of at the advent of charter schools hitting this region.
Yeah.
And they didn't really, there wasn't a lot of guidance given to them on how to do what they were doing. You've got lots, many charter schools have gone out of business because they didn't have the capacity to manage. I mean, it's, it's a very complex system, I mean, and it's, it doesn't, it's not intuitive. And so they were finding themselves getting in deeper and deeper. Right now, there's, with this whole ECOAT piece. And again, when you have, when you have students and money following students, which is reasonable, but you can't accurately track that and the students go from place to place to place, it's kind of hard to have money following places. And so the money lands usually at the first place it went. And then the student has now hopped three other places and the fourth place is back to us, but the money didn't follow. So, um, and I don't know that they've gotten a whole lot better.
Part of the other, this charter school scam that, back in that time, was the fact that the kids would also leave our school district as regular ed students, end up in a charter school and now all of a sudden they're special ed or autistic.
Now it's $12,000 removed.
Now that sixty-two hundred dollars per child that came into the school district that we were being charged for, that child now costs, let's just say ten grand, eleven grand to educate that child because of their title and education and we had to pay that bill. So, I mean, it's.
And there were some who were notorious, whereas like seventy percent of their enrollment.
Was special ed.
Just all this, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know a kid that wasn't special ed and went to one of the charter schools and he ended up special ed.
Yeah.
Because of the money.
Followed the money. And, you know, as a district, we said, that's fine, well, let us test the child. Let us have our people come over and test the child and see if he really does have special needs and, no, can't do it.
Or even, let's let a neutral party test.
Yeah, or somebody.
Yeah, somebody besides, they're, they would say, we have a bias, of course, we want our money back. We would say they have a bias, so let's have a third, and that's, and that's the challenge where the state would not intervene and be the arbitrator to try and, you know. And so anyway, that's a whole nother piece. Because that's where the erosion of, of how we work with states go in the whole charter school movement and all that. And unfortunately, it put public schools against charter schools, when really, it should have been charter schools and public schools against legislators. Because they did not create rules to govern everybody's.
Where does the gambling money come, go? It's the goal, schools are supposed to get the gambling money.
We get a small, we get a small piece, but it's not nearly what you think it is.
With all the money they have?
They have a lot of fees.
Yeah.
Yes.
We get their piece after the fees, right?
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes, that's exactly it, and it's not what they promised us.
Remember the lottery, that was a big sell for the lottery, right?
When you look at the piece of pie that says the schools, you couldn't even find the slice, okay?
It was a line. It wasn't a slice, it was a line.
It was a sliver.
Just the crust.
Because I wouldn't try to find it, my own self.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Yes. But that was very informative, thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Motion for adjournment.
Getting there, getting there, buddy. Okay, I need a motion to approve item eight point zero two, void rate tip agreement that is being requested by the city of Lorain.
Motion to approve item eight point two.
Support.
Discussion. Again, this is a tax abatement on a piece of property on, in downtown Lorain Broadway, Jovick Two LLC. It's a fifteen year, one hundred percent abatement on a four million dollar project that will potentially bring about fifty-some jobs to downtown area of Lorain.
So you know the abatement.
Is it the brewery? What is, or is it the hotel?
It's not the hotel.
Not the hotel.
So what's this one for?
It's one of the banks, developer, Jovick Two LLC is developing one of the bank buildings on Broadway. It's not, the address isn't in here, but one of the old banks that had been closed, they're going to renovate it, put about four million dollars into it, from what I hear.
So you don't know what it's going to be? So it's going to be like a surprise?
The city, I'm sure knows.
Yeah, so the city works out these pieces. And so the city does its portion, they then request that we do an abatement. So what happens for our abatement is, right now, there's a certain amount of property tax that we receive.
Yeah, I know that.
The amount that's debated is, this is a four million dollar renovation. So the value, we still get what the value was, we don't get the increase after the renovation. The benefit, and, and one of the things that we always looked at, we tried to look at, is what is the benefit to the community for this? So fifty people paying income tax is a good thing. Getting the dilapidated buildings renovated is a good thing. This abatement is for fifteen years, so that fifteen year abatement is only for the increased value, correct?
Correct.
So we still get what our, we're going to get what we were always getting, but that increased value, we won't get anything on. And again, we've, we've tried to look at these and say, we don't like doing them forever. Because then what happens is you cripple future boards, so you want to be considerate. But at the same time, what can we do to incentivize folks to come into a community and create jobs? And to address dilapidated issues who have the capital to do it? And, and we don't have the capital in our community to, I mean, downtown is just, it's frightening. It's almost embarrassing, it's like, you bring people.
I gotta quit, because I know it sounds cranky, but I need stipulation, tax, can you put a stipulation on it that they hire people from Lorain City Schools or the kids get a job or something?
That's a good question, yes.
You know what I'm saying, training while they're doing this, they can have, train some kids, like to do the heavy equipment or, or brick and mortar, whatever they do to these buildings. These kids need a job, so if they get a training with it, can't we do something? I mean, you want our money, I mean, you want us to be nice to you, you need to be nice to me.
And we can, you know, again, it's, it's almost like a negotiation process with the city. They send us what they feel can get the job done for them. And then if we want stipulations like that in there, we can respond back to them with the abatement. Says, yeah, we'll, we'll approve this abatement with these stipulations attached to it. Sometimes those stipulations are financially motivated, other times it could be employment.
And depending on what type of establishment it is, the city's, the city's funny. So what we do is we try and play, we get in our sandbox with the city and we try and get into a scenario where we're having some conversations offline a little bit because we have to say, you know, you guys want this from us, what are we getting out of it?
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, we never see anything that they're really doing for us. Well, I want to see something that says Lorain's doing this for Lorain, for the kids. I want some, I want some wide open solution.
And sometimes it's, it's a case where we've had some folks where we said, we need to have accommodations so that there's facilities that work for kids. We want, you know, you're doing, we're doing this, we're doing this. What can we do in terms of, of creating space that's kid-friendly or that's people-friendly? Because we look at our kids, but it's also the community at large. So just what additional benefits? But it gets to be tough when these folks are coming in and they want to do brick and mortar and they want to hire who they want to hire because they're a business, they're not a charity. They're, and so for, you know, and unfortunately, we're on the desperate side of it. We're on the side of it where, please bring us jobs, please bring us jobs.
We need to let them know that we're trying to, you know, I'm saying, we should try to, at least try to find out somebody's willing to work with the school. You're here and then bringing, if you have a decent school district, that brings in people. Now, people look, the first thing, like I said before, when you're, people are looking for a place to live, is the school district. How is, you know, how are the schools, what's good about the schools? So if we have outstanding school district, then then people will come here. But if, you know, we have little problems here, you know. But if we had the out, you know, one of those out, you know, real rich kind of, who, we wouldn't have to worry about all this. So we need to get these schools and then Lorain needs to help us to improve our school system so we can bring people here. That's housing and everything else they're trying to put up that we don't need. And if nobody's going to buy it, because they're not good schools, no offense.
There's also, there's always also the trickle-down effect of it too, that you don't, the kind of the unknowns in this situation. Because you have the reappraisals, revales on all the other properties around it. So just because you're not getting the increase on this one, if this adds, you know, brings some life back to, to downtown, you might see the surrounding properties increase because you're kind of starting down that path. So just because you're losing out on the increase on this one building, you could, you'll probably more than make up on, you're probably more than make up on the surrounding buildings, you would hope. That's kind of the idea of it.
We're just in a real speculative place, just because the fact of what the economy is here in Lorain, we're just not in that, in that position to dictate a whole lot of terms.
But I would just suggest that maybe that, you know, you wash my hands, I'll wash your hands. You know, we can work something out, just like the schools. So my first thing is the school, them, they accept. But you, you know, I'm saying, try to, you know, do something for the kids, do something for the schools, do something for Lorain, schools.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Demakia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Second hearing of the public.
Okay. Our next board meeting is scheduled for September 3rd. That is a holiday, so we're going to cancel that and reschedule it for September 10th at five o'clock. So our board meeting is right for, the month of September will be scheduled for September 10th and September 17th, respectively. If we don't need the 17th, we can discuss that at that time. But currently, September 10th will be a special board meeting if there are no objections to that. Good? Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Demakia.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorain City Schools TV 20 WLCS.